Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the planning board meeting of March 21st, 2023 to order at 7:05 PM. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Put them down, we're going to share space.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. All right. Our first order of business is an informal presentation of and planning board comment on revised project Bridgestone Development, Inc., lot number three, Ricketts Pond Business Park in the Spring Street Innovation District. Do we have somebody here who would like to speak in regards to?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Bob Furbyson. I represent Bridgestone Development, the applicant in this particular matter, with names Mark Chini, Chris, and the representatives from the Kansas Engineering, Brad McKenzie, and Eric Schumacher. We certainly appreciate the board and the members making themselves available, especially to continue it in light of last week's snowstorm. But we have revised the plans and worked on revisions to the plans as part of the special permit application. And in conjunction with that process, have taken into consideration what we understand to believe were concerns that the board and/or members of the board and/or certain members of the board may have had with respect to the original plans. So we had an informal settlement meeting with town council and Chairman Shea, as well as Mr. Bott, and out of that produced what you folks should all have in front of you, which is a revised set of plans. And what I would ask is the opportunity for Eric to walk you folks through what we did at a very high level. You'll see on the plans a relocation of the potable well outside of the buffer zones. We relocated and consolidated dumpster pads at one area to the north of the property. Relocation of propane tanks, which will be shown on the plan, as well as a six-foot-high vinyl fence and a call-out for wall pack lighting on the rear of the buildings as shown on the revised plans that you have in front of you and which I understand are on the screen. In addition to those changes, we added white pine trees to the side yards and made some other changes as well. So with that, I was hoping that Mr. Schumacher could explain those changes in more detail and then more than happy to hear any thoughts or comments that the board may have as part of the process. So thank you for the opportunity.
Please.
Eric Schumacher, McKenzie Engineering. Just to summarize the changes, we removed components of environmental concern outside of the 100-foot buffer zone. So this resulted from that meeting we had back in, I believe it was January 2023. So first one of those changes was a six-foot-high vinyl screening fence proposed on the rear of the lot, and that fence ties into the dumpster enclosure. Those dumpster pads were consolidated and moved outside of the 100-foot buffer zone, which is this green line running across the plan. On the older submission, I believe we had one dumpster located in this similar area, and I believe the dumpster for this building to the south was located to the rear. The call-outs for the wall pack lighting were specified to be motion activated after hours at request of the board. The propane tanks for each building were moved outside of that 100-foot buffer zone to wetlands. You have the propane tank for the northern building located in the landscape buffer on the side yard, and similarly for the southern building located in this landscape buffer south of the building. On sheet C3, the utility plan. The... C3? Yep, C3. So the potable well associated with both buildings was moved north of the site. We tried to hug this northern property line. I believe the setback is, let's say it's 20 feet from the carbon fire to health regulations from property law. So we put the well into this northern corner that allowed it to be outside of this 100-foot buffer zone, and we actually preliminarily sized the septic system, got lot four to the north, and concluded that that worked with the 100-foot septic buffer from the well. On sheet C2, which is the plan above it, we made some minor modifications to the grading pattern. So you'll see where the grading tailed off to 143 contour, as well as 141, 140, and 142 contour. The locations were revised to tie into the existing grades in the slope, and we did that. You know, you'll see it's a slight change in the plan, but the purpose of that revision was to locate the extent of grading outside of this red line, which is the 65-foot no impervious buffer zone. We wanted to make sure to respect basically the natural resource of that well. The final change, you know, the compost filter tube in this area was revised accordingly. That's this dotted line running on the rear of the plan, and that's the erosion control, which I believe is in place today. So the final changes was just to the landscape plan, sheet LA1. That's at the bottom of this. Thank you. So on the revision to the landscape plan, we added some white pine trees on the side yard buffers in this northern buffer and south of the second building. I believe we added five white pine trees to this, to the south side of the buffer, and four to the north. We wanted to provide a greater variety of trees and shrubs, so we beefed that up a little bit and added a double row of staggered arborvitae's here behind the screening fence, which will, should mitigate any sort of light pollution directed at the abutters across the lake there. So that's a quick summary of the changes to the plan since the last time we've met. If you can answer any questions the board members may have.
Thank you, Eric.
Was it necessary that they need something for the sound barrier there? I mean...
Well, that's where the loading docks are, and the trucks will be backing in that way, so they tend to be loud and the headlights can be somewhat invasive, plus with the echo factor off the back of the building.
Are you sure that, looking at the contour lines, I'm sorry.
No, please.
Looking at the contour lines with regards to the buffering fence, is six foot going to be enough? Because it looks like from the contour lines that you're losing a foot where the fence is going to be, and then when you add the height of the semis, especially with the lights and whatnot, I think six foot, I mean, that's going to drop it down to five foot by the time comparatively to the building. Thinking about for the neighbors over there.
Now, what's the building at 154 and the fence is at 142 and a half?
The northern building is elevation 144 at the south. The southern building is 142. So the elevation of the rear parking behind both buildings, it does vary.
I was going to say, it looks like, I was looking at it, it looked like 142 is where it ended, and 141 is where the fence would be, so.
Are these the current?
Yeah, those are the current plans.
No, I mean, are these the current, because I see 155, 160, 160. Those are the current?
That's existing, yeah.
Grades, correct?
The lot hasn't, they haven't finished grading the lot.
Yeah, okay.
So on sheet C2, you can see the elevations at the rear of the property. Generally with, it's easier to... So we designed it in a way for the parking area to slope to the southern catch basin here in the corner. So it's generally a consistent slope behind the edge of pavement, and with that, I think the fence, it's not going to be completely level, it's going to slope with the parking area. So if it's set, I believe I had it one foot behind the edge of curb, it should run with the parking downhill slightly. And I believe a headlight in a car is roughly four feet high, so a six-foot fence should...
But for semis that are driving back there?
I don't...
Just box trucks.
Yeah, they couldn't get a semi in back there.
Box trucks at the largest.
Okay. And, all right. And how much of a gap are we leaving at the bottom of it for wildlife?
Bottom of the fence. I don't believe there's any. And there's a double row of arborvitae's before that, so if they go past both...
So I'm just thinking about wildlife being able to pass underneath.
Because you do have the pond right there, that's all, you know? So basically, if you had the six-foot fence and you just had it like a foot off the ground with something, an animal, a goat, go on the knees, it'd suit us.
That would add a foot to the height as well.
And it would add the foot. That would eliminate our issue right here about the 142. That's all right?
Yeah. That's fine.
I got nothing else right now.
Excellent. Kevin?
I only had a question as far as looking at the scale being one inch to 20 feet. So the arborvitae's are spaced somewhere around 10, 15 feet apart, and then 20 feet, about 20 feet apart.
Yeah, I believe they're a 10-foot off-center, so I can...
Yeah, 10-foot off-center looks about right, and they're about 20 feet apart, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alan, Doug?
How far is is the closest house that...
It's 400 feet on the other side of the pond. I'm just going from memory here. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I think we have to look at the plan, but that sounds about right.
Right. I think the biggest issue with that was that it was over open water, so I think that raised certain concerns. Well, if there's no more questions from the board, thank you very much, gentlemen. I think it's a big improvement, and I think you've done a very good job of working with them, so thank you very much.
Do you want to grab the plans and then when you do the review, you just re-visit them instead of recreating them?
Okay.
One or two. I have two right here.
Okay.
I know those can get quite expensive.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
All right. Our next order of business is a request by Cranberry Point Energy Storage LLC for a site plan minor modification and special permit extension request, 31 rear main street assessors maps, 61 lot 7-0.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name's Dan Bailey. I am a land use lawyer at Pierce Atwood in Boston, Council Two Plus Power in Cranberry Point. With me tonight is Chris Coranta, who is a project engineer for Plus Power on this particular project. We've got two requests in front of you tonight. There's a special permit that authorizes this project, as well as a site plan approval that authorizes the project. We're requesting an extension for two years of expiration date of each of those zoning approvals. We're also requesting a minor modification of the plans in the site plan approval. So last before this board, in the middle of 2021, you know, we got it, and I think there were some new members since then. I was, I didn't represent the Plus Power at that hearing, that meeting. We just thought we'd do a real quick, you know, review of what we've got here. The project is a 150-megawatt battery storage facility that would store electricity from Dean Jason substation and power lines, and Chris can certainly explain that a lot better than I can, if you have any specific questions on that. We were here two years ago, and the board granted extensions and a minor modification at that time. The special permit, original site plan approval were first issued in 2019. Plus Power is an industry leader in the development of utility-to-scale standalone energy storage facilities. Plus Power and its employees are experienced in this type of work, very similar to the facility that we're talking about tonight. Plus Power has over 120 employees, many of whom are veterans of the public utility and clean energy industry, with decades of experience developing power plants. Since Plus Power was formed, the company has developed three facilities of similar size to this facility enclosed at Cranberry Point, and are currently constructing three additional sites. By the end of 2024, Plus Power expects to have 10 facilities in operation across the United States. The Cranberry Point Energy Storage Project is, as I mentioned, a 150-megawatt facility on an approximately six-acre site. Its main components are self-contained battery enclosures, medium voltage transformers, and bidirectional power inverters. Facility is appropriately siting next to existing transmission lines on one of Eversource's largest electric substations in Massachusetts. Post-facility will be designed, constructed, and operating in compliance with the latest safety codes and standards. In addition, this type of facility is a cornerstone of the Commonwealth's renewable energy strategy. It offers energy strategy substantial power potential value to the Commonwealth, including contribution of the state's energy reliability goals, along with the addition of local jobs during construction, permanent operations, and maintenance jobs during operation, and substantial tax benefits paid directly to the town. So development on the project was started several years ago, as I said, March 26th, 2019. This board reviewed the project, endorsed approval, site plan application, special permit. Then we had extensions in 2021. You know, I'm sure that the question is, well, why are we here again? And Chris will go into that in a little bit more detail, but the answer is that it takes a long time to get these projects reviewed, permitted. We need to enter into agreements with Eversource, and, you know, trying to get them done in two years or even four is just very difficult. In this particular case, we have a petition pending before the Energy Facility Siting Board. That was filed way back in August of 2021. We don't, we finished our hearings with the EFSB, but we don't anticipate any sort of order from them until sometime this summer. The other thing that we're asking for is a minor site plan modification. Modifications in there, in your package, the board is up there. Oh, even better. Look both ways, Dan. And it shows with clouds, and then the notes explain what the changes have been. I'll just tell you very quickly is the changes. Number one is a reduction in the total number of battery enclosures from 116 to 82. Number two is repositioning of some enclosures. They're all within the project footprint previously approved by the town, and that's primarily to facilitate realignments for access lanes within the site. And then the third thing is updates to substation equipment type. We're incorporating feedback and details from both Eversource and from Tesla. These design changes serve to improve ease of access and maintenance of equipment, don't affect the overall footprint of the project site. Want to add, you know, the original site plan review and special permits, of course, had conditions. We will, of course, comply with those conditions. We're not asking to change for any of them. I'll stop there, and I'll turn it over to Chris to talk a little bit more about why we're here tonight. So just wanted to provide a little bit of additional detail on the timeline.
Chris, I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you just identify your full name?
Sure. Chris Coranta.
Thank you, Chris.
Of Massachusetts, Plus Power. So just to provide a little bit of additional information, I wanted to explain some of the process with the EFSB. This project, sort of different than maybe any of the other projects you've seen in town, because it is over 100 megawatts, is required to go through the process of the Energy Facility Siting Board, which is a subcomponent of the Department of Public Utilities that regulates the design, build, and implementation of power plants and/or transmission lines over a certain distance. This technology is obviously newer to the Energy Facility Siting Board, and part of the process that we've gone through is actually a petition that was filed back in 2019 when the original site plan approvals went through to obtain the EFSB's jurisdictional decision on how they wanted to manage the project and whether or not they were going to oversee the project. In February, that was done in January of 2019. In February of 2019, the EFSB filed a notice and request for comments. Comments were received from N-Star Electric, now Eversource, Mass. Electric, Nantucket Electric, now National Grid, as well as Renewables East. And over two rounds of discovery questions went back and forth between the EFSB and the company, totaling just under 100 different data points. In early 2021, in working with Pierce Atwood, we came to understand that the EFSB would actually have jurisdiction for this type of project. That sort of understanding had evolved within the state government, and so in June of 2021, we withdrew the original jurisdiction, permit, excuse me, petition for jurisdictional determination from the EFSB so that we could go forward with the actual EFSB petition process per Mass. Law 69 and a quarter J, as Dan talked about in August of 2021. One other minor point, and then I'll stop, is just to give a little bit of detail on sort of the transition and why we're describing some of these minor modifications to the site. The technology that we talked about in the beginning of this permit application back in 2019 was the Tesla Megapack and the product that Tesla produced at that point in time. Tesla, like any manufacturing company and engineering company, does continue to evolve their products. That is extremely typical, no difficult, no different than an automotive product, air conditioner, anything like that. And in the course of that, it also evolved from a particular form of battery chemistry that was used in the Tesla Megapack 1, which is, take one step back for people's sort of background, lithium-ion batteries are a very generic term. There are probably 15 to 20 different chemistries and more being developed today that are all governed under the term lithium-ion. It's not a specific chemistry. What the chemistry relies on is the coatings and materials that go into the anode and cathode design of the cell. Previous generations of the Tesla Megapack used NMC, nickel, manganese, cobalt, or NCA, nickel, cobalt, and aluminum. Those battery technologies happen to be a lot more advantageous in the automotive industry. They provide much better power ratios and are much better in an automobile. And from a capital, I mean, from a market system, those technologies are being driven much more in the automotive, which is actually good, because the chemistry that we're utilizing in this version of the Tesla Megapack that we're installing or planning to install going forward on the project, and that we went through the EFSB hearings discussing and detailing in extensive detail, are the Tesla Megapack 2, and it's using what's called LFP as the chemistry. That is a lithium-ion, I-R-O-N, just so my Boston accent doesn't mix it, phosphate-based chemistry. What's advantageous there is that is a lot less volatile than NMC. It's not as susceptible to going into thermal runaway. I don't mean that to say it wouldn't, but it goes into thermal runaway at a much higher temperature, and a lot of that detail is in a lot of the supporting information documentation that went into the EFSB, as well as to the process here and the work we've done with the carbon fire department as well. Last piece of data on that point is that as part of that process, Tesla, as that product emerged, had to go through additional product testing. The same way RV1 and your consumer products go through UL and other certifications to guarantee their safety, these pieces of equipment have to go through the same process. They're certified to a wide range of different UL and IEC certifications. You guys have addressed a lot of those in the bylaw changes you're looking at going forward. And one of those key ones is obviously the UL 9540A testing requirement. It's not a standard, it's a testing routine, and that's done as an outcome of, or as an outcropping of, the NFPA 55 requirements, which take the equipment and bring it all the way through failure modes to understand how it's going to react and how it's going to perform. That testing, as you can imagine, burning a large piece of equipment or attempting to burn a large piece of equipment takes a considerable amount of time and effort, and those activities, as the product matured, took a considerable amount of time as well during the timeline that we're talking about. So that drives some of the realignment and positioning of the equipment, as well as some of the other points that we can talk about if there's any questions. Thank you for the time and sort of the introduction and explanations there.
Sure. I'm going to ask you some questions on the map, so I'll start with number three in the upper left-hand corner where you put the cloud there.
Yep.
Minor updates to substation equipment type and size.
Yep.
What is...
So what that means is, as part of a project of this size and this magnitude, we have to go through a process with Eversource that includes, and so New England, which is the governing body that manages the market in the New England states. And that process includes the implementation of what's called a large generation interconnection agreement. And that agreement dictates that Eversource, in order for us to connect to their transmission system, which is a completely different entity than sort of the distribution system that you see a lot of the solar projects in town connected to, or, you know, that our houses are connected to. And that's highly regulated and owned by Eversource, and there's a process you have to go through. to go through. Part of that is an interconnecting facility that's dictated by Eversource's rules and doctrine that outline what specifically they have to put in place to connect our system to their transmission system. Unfortunately, that evolves over time. And so exactly the implementation of the types of circuit breakers, type of types of overhead structures, et cetera, are not changing in a real magnitude, but the exact products that are available, vendors that are available to supply that equipment in today's environment and everything else are a part of what has evolved and will probably continue to evolve as Eversource completes the design that's wholly in their space and ownership.
Mr. Chair.
Please.
Can I ask him?
Yes, absolutely.
So as these evolve, you are, you mentioned the Carver Fire Department. You are working with the Carver Fire Department to see that they are aware of this and working with this and training on this, these changes?
Absolutely. So we've been working with the Carver Fire Department since the permit application went in in 2019. We've been working with both the Code Enforcement Officer and the Deputy Chief exclusively on that, and we have met with them a number of times over the course of it. We've continued to keep them updated with all of the details. And in fact, as we completed the Energy Facility Siting Board activities, there were updated documents that they were aware of, you know, that are part of public record for that process that we also reviewed with them and went through in detail.
Up where number four is, which shows equipment on the original one, what, what's happening up there?
So basically, the fence line that sort of came in from that secondary access. So part of the feedback from the Carver Fire Department was they wanted secondary access. The land is bordered both on the north and to the west by easements that Eversource owns for the transmission corridors that already exist there. So we were able to work through access on that northern side, but exactly how the fence was laid out there and how the fire department's access would come into our area, not Eversource's area, had to be reworked based on the original site plan. So the outer fence is the exact same thing, same distances, same alignment. It's the inner fences. Basically, Eversource won't allow the fire department in, and so we needed to sort of cut off the access and make it into our equipment, the same way as the Carver substation that's just the block.
Now, isn't the circuit breaker located in that area?
So our, so it probably helps to explain this, let me take a step back if I may. There's two sort of substations that you have to go through in the project in order to connect to the transmission system. It's somewhat dictated by those rules I was talking about earlier for interconnection to the transmission system. We need to have a substation at our, that's part of our project that we own, that basically takes the output of the battery enclosures, converts from DC to AC, steps it up to a higher voltage to group them together, and then steps it up to a voltage that equals what Eversource's equipment are. That's my responsibility to get it to the point where it would then transfer to Eversource. So I have to put in all this sort of protection, circuit breakers, transformer, protection equipment, relays, et cetera, to guarantee that I can protect the site to all the utility rules. Then Eversource has their own set of equipment and all of that that's required to connect. So they have another set of equipment that's in that larger area. In that area, they're not actually transforming voltage. It's really what they call a three breaker ring bus. It's a mechanism that they use to basically cut a transmission line, loop it into a circle and be able to redirect their connections in order to tie into the project. So that's the distinction between the two.
Now, where will the fire department shut off be located? Will they have access to a shut off?
They would have access to a shut off for the battery plant side of things.
Yes.
They wouldn't to the Eversource side of things.
Right.
But that would be, and it would be worked through in the final engineering designs as we go through, you know, the IFC level drawings for the project, but they would likely be a shut off or access, sort of access point for them on the eastern side. There's actually two entrances on the eastern side of the site. There's one just above that. Yep, right where you are, Tom, thank you. And then up above, we would work with the Carver Fire Department on exactly where they wanted it and the exact details, but would expect that it would probably be towards the top one, the closest point, right where that cut out there is where the exist, excuse me, existing cell tower is to date.
All right. So under number four, there's a cloud there. It looks like you've removed a few of the facilities there.
Not really removed. I think for trying to show the fence and show everything in one drawing, we kind of chose this site layout. There will be equipment there.
It looks like two container units or roughly have been removed.
Yeah, what will be in there is a switchgear, circuit breaker lineup and a transformer to step from 35,000 volts up to 115,000 volts, which is what the transmission system is. And then the appropriate sort of protection equipment and disconnects.
All right. I'm asked, I'm gonna, I'm gonna show you this. I'm just asking. Are they removing these?
So this was the.
These.
These have, yes. So in the transition, maybe it's easier if I go up here.
Thanks.
So in the evolution of the product from this layer here, the Tesla Megapack one to the Tesla Megapack two, there are some improvements in the density of the equipment, and that's part of why we don't need 116 enclosures, we're down to 82 enclosures. We were also able to not need to use this space, and we're able to consolidate this a little bit as well. The other thing we did is if you look at sort of these access points, there's a lot of turns in here, and from a fire perspective and an access perspective, these aren't ideal. We want a truck to be able to come in and make a 360 degree, you know, circumnavigate the site. And so we worked with the fire department, make sure we have the specs on their largest vehicle, and then it can access all these turning points. And that's where if you, I apologize to make you shift, yeah. This now is one seamless sort of semicircle, same thing here, it's easy turns. Because of the way the layout is here, these would have to be what they call more hammerhead, but the fire department is okay with this setup, and we reviewed that with them in detail. Did I answer your?
Yes, yes, you did, yep. What changes in containment and fire suppression are we looking at in regards to the Tesla packs upgrade?
There's not really a change in their fire suppression. So Tesla's actually pretty unique, and this is something that's evolved even since I started in the industry 10 years ago. What's really become very apparent is different than what you'd see in sort of an automotive issue with electric vehicles, something like that. Putting water on these enclosures actually complicates a lot of issues if they ever went into thermal runaway case, and that thermal runaway then propagated into a real fire event. And the reason for that is it creates problems with actually cooling the batteries. But the problem is you're not putting out the fire. You're not actually stopping it. It's not the same sort of fire as a combustible element, and you're better off to actually let that fire burn itself out, consume the fuel and stop. And we've reviewed this in detail, not only with the Carver Fire Department, but with industry experts, professional engineers and such, as part of, well, not only the NFPA, but others. And that's really become the, the sort of approach to these sort of systems and make sure, it's part of how all the UL 9548 testing sort of validates that approach. So going back to your point, there's not an effective need nor value in putting a water fire suppression or even a chemical fire suppression system inside the equipment. They do have fire detection, and what they've actually recommended and proven through the same UL 9548 testing is that the best and most effective approach is actually to use thermal cameras external to the equipment. You can pick up the heat signature change internal to the equipment in mere seconds and actually trigger fire detection based on that and response versus having sort of smoke detection or heat detection inside the equipment that could be damaged, et cetera.
Now, on the chance that there was a thermal runway, runway issue, what would be done to maintain the chemical output into the atmosphere?
Yep. So what is also significantly different with this version of the Tesla product and with LFP chemistry? Again, if I'm going into too much detail, stop me, but from a UL 9548 perspective, what that test does is it does three levels of test. Technically, it does four, depending on how you progress. They start with a cell, and they cause a cell to go into thermal runaway, and they study it in depth, capture all sorts of information. Then they go to a module, which is a grouping of a bunch of cells into one physical unit, and they do the same thing. Then they go to what's called unit level testing. That's the entire enclosure. So the 30 foot by eight foot by five foot wide, fully charged, fully loaded battery system. In Tesla's case, when they got to that unit level testing, they started with a single cell in a module, forced it to go into thermal runaway. It went into thermal runaway. It didn't cause any other cells to get hot enough to actually go into thermal runaway. So it was essentially a non-event. And anything that occurred stayed within the enclosure. They did, to bury the lead, that six more times. It wasn't until they actually heated a seventh cell altogether that they caused, sorry, a sixth cell that caused a seventh to go into thermal runaway. It still stopped there. They were not able to propagate it any further. So based on what is reviewed by the NFPA as a credible worst-case failure scenario, seven, six cells within the exact same module all grouped together in one area were only able to cause a seventh cell to go into thermal runaway. If any of those, that first cell occurred, we would know based on temperature data and warnings within the equipment immediately. It would be communicated to our 24/7 Network Operations Center, which would then make the determination whether or not it needed to go to the fire department, whether we dispatch personnel, et cetera, and progress from there.
Now, say one of them, on the off chance one of them went into a thermal runway inside the container, what sort of cleanup would be done at that point to make sure that the next person that comes in is not exposed to?
Absolutely. So the manufacturer actually has pretty detailed procedures and processes and sort of an outcropping of their experience, in this case Tesla, obviously, with the automotive industry, has really good emergency response, details already outlined for that sort of event. If it was a single cell, let's say, that went into thermal runaway inside of a single module, we would obviously know about it. Instantly, the equipment would automatically shut itself down. More than likely, based on all the test data, nothing further would propagate, that unit would be offline. People would be dispatched to site immediately and would investigate it. More than likely, based on, again, that test data, you wouldn't even be able to tell which one it was because there's no scarring, there's no debris or anything like that. Module would be removed safely and removed from site, and the rest of the equipment would be evaluated and tested to make sure there wasn't any other further damage before a replacement module or replacement equipment would be installed and then tested and brought back into service.
Did we, I seem to recall that we required external notification of thermal runways if there was an issue of red light outside the entrance or exits?
Off the top of my head, I don't recall, but that sort of an implementation would not be difficult.
Because, you know, if the fire department shows up and, well, there's a considerable amount of containers and they're going to want to be able to locate it and enter safely.
What we would do as well, in addition to something like that, is as you sort of arrived at site, where we talked about that same sort of shut off disconnect, there would be what I would call an incident command point, probably right inside the fence, because if it was external, I'd have to deal with vandalism, where you would have likely a map of the whole site, identification of where things are. You'd have a copy of the safety data sheets that are applicable to the site. You'd also have a copy of the emergency response plan with contact information of the appropriate people, all as a secondary backup layer in case those things didn't happen. There is, in addition to pushing the industry to actually have sort of a real-time active notification where literally there'd be a website listed at that same point, you could pull, anyone could pull that website up on their phone and you'd see sort of where, and I think in the 2023 version of the NFPA, that's actually, you know, 855, that's actually documented as well. So it would be something like that. It would be easy to implement sort of a light, but I think in that sort of application, the sort of real-time information right there at the incident command point might even be more effective.
Now, you brought up vandalism and I, you probably know more than anybody else in the past year, there's been quite a few incidents on power substations of various things. What, what do we, what kind of security or are we looking at to?
Yep. That's a great question. It's really become a serious issue across the board for the utility industry. For the system as it is, it would obviously be protected by an appropriately height fence. I honestly, I apologize, I don't remember if we're allowed barbed wire in Carver or not, but it would meet the utility standards and the town requirements for that sort of security. We would have security cameras as well. Likely, because it tends to cause more problems than not, they wouldn't immediately notify police, but it would notify us if there's access or anything like that, so that we could then view and respond to what's going on if there was an attempted vandalism. If someone fired a shot into the equipment, they'd have to get through the steel doors. They are sort of thicker than, let me take a step back. If you look at the sort of incidents that happened in North Carolina and in Washington State, what people go after, and unfortunately, this is the sad truth, is the radiator fins are extremely thin walled on transformers for the exact purpose of radiating heat out. They're susceptible. If you start putting a couple of shots into a transformer radiator, you're going to leak oil, you're going to lose its medium, and you're going to take that transformer out. These days, even the transformers that are in utility substation are almost two-year lead times. So you can really significantly impact a region by taking that sort of equipment out. In this case, you wouldn't necessarily cause an outage in town or anything like that because we're really sort of a generation and storage asset off the transmission system. Yes, someone could fire a bullet into it. I think if you go back to, again, the UL 9548 data, someone would have to sit there and fire multiple magazines of high-capacity equipment in, and then still, the likeliness of them hitting a grouping of cells closely together to create a thermal runaway event that then would create enough heat to propagate through the enclosure or multiple enclosures, I think, is extremely difficult to sort of.
That's, you're doing great. If somebody takes the transformer out, say that the main or the secondary transformer in regards to that, what happens at that point?
So all of the transformers, both the medium voltage and the high voltage transformers would, would be within the project, have a series of kind of standard protection mechanisms. There are typically a pressure sensor, a oil temperature sensor and a gas detection sensor. More than likely, it would be a little bit of a race condition. One of those three things is going to trigger very shortly after someone damaged a transformer to the point where it started to lose the oil, which is the cooling mechanism. And from there, it would automatically shut down the battery equipment that's connected to that transformer through the protection and controls that are in place, and we would get notified in our Network Operating Center that that occurred. But we obviously wouldn't know it was vandalism until we responded to site, but then we would appropriately, you know, react based on what the fault was to the site.
How often are we going to run training exercises with the fire department?
As often as they want, need and require.
Okay. Do we have anything from the fire department, Mr. Bott?
No, we do not.
Pardon?
Oh, we do not. It's a minor modification.
Well, if we're, if we're changing fire lanes and are we changing the spacing between the modules?
No, they're all the same sort of distance. That's based on that UL 9548 test data, about the appropriate spacing. If the enclosure ever went into a full flame event, you've got to guarantee that the closure spacing is far enough where you won't cause enough heat to bring a cell in an adjacent unit up to thermal runaway as well. And that's normally dictated by about an eight-foot distance. That's been consistent across all of these as the equipment's been consolidated in in that change.
Because we're changing certain aspects of this that clearly regard the fire department, we're going to request, I know you've been working with Jesse Boyle, so.
Yep.
We're going to request a letter from them in regards to this to make sure that the modifications are appropriate and up to their standards. And in that, we're just going to ask what their training schedule is going to be. Is it going to be every year, every three years?
Yep.
Or what the case may be. Off the top of my head, I don't have any further questions.
I would like you to be a little more clear on a question that the chair did ask. He did ask about, in the event it got passed the seventh module, uh.
Yep.
Heating where it actually was on fire, and then you mentioned that the fire would have to burn itself out.
Yep.
His concern was, you know, the smoke that would come from that. And my concern is that you didn't explain if there, let's say, there was.
Yep.
A fire, you know? It would be nice for the public to hear an explanation.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So let me go back and I apologize. So basically, when the cell testing was done, one of the things they do at the UL-9548 level cell testing is capture the gases that are released. They are very typical gases to what you'd have when anything burns. I mean, the, without trying to, I don't mean this unpsychistic, but when campfire wood burns, there is a lot of toxic stuff in there. Methanes, hydrocarbons. There's a series of ethylenes that are released. Go off the top of my head, I can also reference it. Those would be released as part of the cell if the cell went into flaming. Initially, they would be within the container. In order for them to get outside of the container, it would eventually be when someone responded and opened them. More than likely, they would have dissipated within the container. If you got to the point where multiple cells within a module or even multiple modules went into thermal runaway, and what happens with the Tesla Megapack is that in order to address another requirement of NFPA 55, you have to prevent deflagration or an explosion. Batteries do not explode unless you do something to them. What explodes is trapped gas. What happens is if you get trapped gas within the enclosure and that gas has nowhere to go, it's pretty much the same sort of thing that happened in the Middle East with the containers, all the storage containers. You get pressure in a closed space, it gets ignited, it can blow. Tesla has a unique architecture where they actually have what they call deflagration vents that are architected into the system and tested and proven to operate before pressure level builds up to a point where it could cause any risk. The other thing they do, which is a little counterintuitive, but is actually a very standard process in the gas and chemical environment, is they actually have what's called basically a spark plug inside the equipment at multiples. And what happens is that spark plug is constantly triggering. And if any gas builds up, that spark plug triggers that gas before it's of any dangerous level and actually opens the deflagration vents. So what would happen is basically the same sort of thing. You would have a house went on fire and the fire department went to the roof. They cut the hole in the roof to vent it. They're trying to basically funnel that gas, that trapped gas, out so that they don't risk an explosion or other issues. And that would be part of it. The, let me, to go back to your question, I don't want to. So carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide, hydrogen, methane, acetylene, ethylene, ethane, propane, propane, as well as a number of other components that are all well under a single percentage of the released gases. The three highest released gases, carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide, and hydrogen, account for 60, 70, 80, 90% of the released gases. Does that cover?
So these won't have those gases?
No, those are the gases that were released from a cell that would be representative of a fire if it occurred on the enclosure.
Could you just repeat that list of gases one more time, please?
Carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide, hydrogen, methane, acetylene, ethylene, ethane, propylene, propane, propane. And just for context, beyond hydrogen, everything I've mentioned is in the single-digit percentage of the total gas volume. Benzene, tuleene, dimethylcarbonate, ethylmethylcarbonate. And that's what's described in the UL-9548 test.
Now, you said carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide, and hydrogen make up what percentage?
47, 29, and 11. So 47 plus the percentage, 88%.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Questions?
Yeah. So sticking with that line of thought to start with, what is the particulate makeup of the smoke that would, that would come off of in case of a fire?
In terms of size of the particulates or components?
Components.
What I just read.
No. Those are gases.
Yep.
What about the particulates?
There's almost none.
Then why does the smoke so black when those things burn?
Because you're burning plastics.
Okay, so what's in that?
That's going to vary based on the exact composition. That's no different than the plastics that are in our homes and our computers or anything else.
Right, because when these things go up, they produce a, excuse my French, a lot of smoke.
If they got to that point, yes, they would.
Yeah, and they close down roadways, block people in their homes.
So there's a lot of context to that sort of situation, right? I mean, if you look at what happened in Monterey, which is one of the ones you're talking about, I've spoke, we, sorry, I have not spoken to that chief. Our consultants have worked with that chief and are actually doing the failure analysis on the single Megapack that burned at the Big Elk Energy Storage Facility. That is an NMC-based Megapack 1 product. If you've ever been in Monterey and along the Pacific Coast Highway there, it is a small two-lane, not, sorry, one-lane road each direction. Your standard operating procedure for anything that happens there with the winds that come off of Monterey Bay are to shut the road down and shelter in place for smoke. It's what they do for wildfires and everything else.
Just so you know, every road in town is a two-lane road.
I completely agree.
Okay, just so we're on the same page.
Absolutely.
So there's no big roads that wouldn't, that this thing wouldn't shut down as well as trap people in their homes?
Potentially, no different than...
Or prevent them from getting home. So in your, in one of the descriptions of your changes, you're going from 116 to 82 enclosures. So the lithium-ion batteries are a lower-density energy battery pack compared to the LMC or LMA, whichever the...
And NMC.
So why, if we're going from a lower-density battery, are you reducing the size, the output size of this facility?
No. So what?
So why would we be going from, with, with a battery that doesn't hold as much electricity and reducing the number of enclosures? It sounds like we're concentrating more of the batteries into a smaller space, exposing us to greater risk.
So the LFP chemistry is, on a per-area basis of the cell, is less dense than NMC. You have less cells and more of them, I'm sorry, less of them. The Tesla Megapack 2 XL does have more modules in it. But in terms of a square footage of what they take up for the piece of equipment, they take up, we need less of them. They have more energy within the total enclosure, but you need less of them versus the Megapack 1. So the cell itself is not as dense.
So there's more cells.
But there are more cells.
So there's more cells and more stuff in the enclosure compared to the old one? So, again, why would we be reducing the number of enclosures?
Because the enclosures are at higher energy content.
Exactly.
Yes.
So it exposes us to greater risk.
I don't understand that, but that's fine.
More energy, bigger bomb? Okay.
More energy in less-dense cells that go into thermal runaway at a much higher temperature.
That are all closer together now? Because you're going from bigger enclosure to smaller enclosure?
No, I didn't say that. I said the enclosure...
Well, sorry, you're going from more enclosures to fewer enclosures.
That have more energy.
So you're putting more stuff, you're putting more stuff in them. All right. That's fine. So, all right, you already, so what, the, the gases that you were going over, those are the ones that were coming off of the lithium-ion?
LFP, lithium-ion phosphate.
Lithium-ion phosphate, yeah, yeah. Okay, and so you're stepping everything up to 115K. Let's see, is there a, what's the discharge recharge schedule expected for this?
So the system is architected, sorry.
And what is the, the plan as far as personnel on site for stuff like that?
Yep, so the system does not require personnel on site to operate. It operates autonomously. The system is what's called the two-hour system, hence the 150 megawatts, 300 megawatt hours. It would typically discharge per ISO New England control and direction. When there's a peak and a need, typically you would think of that if you look at the curves, right, so New England, between the evening hours, sort of in the 4:00 to 8:00 PM, depending on the time and the season, sort of timeframe. And then more than likely, it would recharge, excuse me, over the course of the night. Typically, here in New England, the rates actually get extremely small in late hours of the night, if not to the negative, where they can, you can actually, by charging off the grid or removing load from the grid, you can earn money. And it would do that at a much lower rate and lower level over the course of the evening to recharge and be ready for the next day. That's a typical sort of profile that ISO New England would use it for.
Okay, so this is going to be on a regular, basically, for lack of a better, for lack of better definition at the, at the moment, talking like a nightly discharge and recharge?
Sort of a late afternoon, early evening discharge and likely an overnight or early morning recharge.
Daily.
On a daily basis, yes.
How long have these been in existence?
So Tesla first released the, its original product. So did you, sorry, you mean energy storage or the Tesla product exactly, or?
The whole works. How long has this been?
So I'll answer it in stages. I've been doing this for almost 11 years. Did some of my first systems in the 2011, 2012 timeframe. Most of that has been working with LFP, although also NMC, so both of those chemistries have been around for quite a long time. Tesla started, I don't know exact dates, but started with their original product called the Power Pack. I want to say around 2015, '17, somewhere in that neighborhood, that evolved to the Tesla Megapack 1 and has now evolved to the Tesla Megapack 2, really sort of enhancements in the product and the transition that I talked about from chemistry of, type of chemistry types of the battery cell.
What kind of failures have you seen in these?
So more often than not, the failures are what you would expect with typical electronic or electrical equipment that you'd find in substations. And that, a lot of it is electronic circuit board failures that never cause an issue from, you know, to get to a fire or any sort of event like that. Modules that maybe don't, you know, just like a battery you have in a home appliance doesn't work as well, you replace the battery. Fans, mechanical systems, pumps, things of that nature are all fairly typical failure mechanisms. I think, you know, the nature of it is we all see what happens in the news. You see the sort of, sort of extreme failures when they do happen. But those are, if you look at the total sort of install base that's out there, I think at this point, there's something like 50 systems in Massachusetts. Not many of this size, but there hasn't been any of these sort of failures certainly here. You've definitely seen the ones that have occurred, but with each of those, what's, I think valuable is this pretty extensive, you know, learnings that come from those. And if you look at the real engineering reports that came out of either Australia from the Victorian big battery event, there was a very detailed technical report that came from the Australian government, as well as Fisher Engineering and ESRG, that detailed sort of what the, the real facts were versus what's sort of in the news. Same thing is in process with what happened in Monterey. Unfortunately, you see some of the situations like what happened in Chandler, Arizona. That was prior to the NFPA 55 existing. So a lot of the, so standards we adhere to today did not exist when Mikkun happened in Chandler, Arizona. Or you have systems like what's happened at the adjacent facility in Monterey that's owned by Vistra, that, you know, you have a battery in a building, which isn't necessarily as ideal a situation. You have a fault in an air conditioner with a bearing seizes and catches on fire, and then you dump millions of gallons of water on millions of batteries. So those are sort of the typical sort of situations that you've seen out there.
And how did Carver get picked to have this?
Yeah, sure. So I've grown up and lived in New England all my life. I'm Massachusetts-born and raised. Unfortunately, if you look at New England and where the sources of generation are and where the people are, that's where you need the electricity. I live just outside of Milbury, Mass. in Northbridge. One of National Grid's largest substations is in Milbury. And that's kind of an outcropping of what happened when Boston Edison, Mass. Electric developed the infrastructure 50 years ago. Same thing with Carver. One of my engineers was part of the different projects at Eversource that built that substation up to now be one of Eversource's largest. I think it's the second largest, be the third in Massachusetts. I think Medway is a little bit bigger. You have two 345 KV AC lines that go in there, one from National Grid, one from Eversource. You have, I think, seven 115 KV transmission connections. None of that has to do with the distribution system. It all has to do with stability of the region as a whole. And so for an energy storage system to be effective, it needs to be electrically close to that sort of intersection point. Putting it miles away on a transmission system from that sort of node in the electricity market and in the electricity, think of it as superhighway, limits its effectiveness in terms of what it can do to those different transmission circuits. And so that is sort of the way the state and then the area in New England has developed, sort of the fact that we all sort of deal with in terms of how the, the utilities have built out the infrastructure. And that's why this particular site electrically is an attractive way to be able to help the utility grid. That's added by the fact that we've now retired every coal plant in Massachusetts, which is a good thing, but that puts us completely reliant on natural gas or solar and wind. If you Google in the news on December 24th, we almost had massive blackouts here in New England. We were lucky we didn't. Natural gas comes directly from a wellhead. It doesn't get stored anywhere. When we were through that extreme cold period just before Christmas, they couldn't get natural gas into the area. All our plants are natural gas. So these sort of systems, while it wouldn't have stopped that entire situation, having the ability to store electricity and repurpose it at times when it's needed is absolutely critical to sort of the overall stability of the, the grid as we remove fossil fuels from the system.
Are there going to be changes to your cooling systems or in regards to you changing the battery systems over? Are the containment cooling systems?
Cooling system is still the same architecture. It is a ethylene glycol-based cooling system that goes through cooling plates that circulated exactly the same way it's done in an EV and in your car today through your engine.
Now, will those be contained off of the battery storage system? Will they be running if there was, say, a blackout?
This system isn't really architected. So there are projects and entities in different markets where they want these systems to operate in a blackout. They call them Black Start or Islanded Systems. Eversource and ISO New England don't really have provisions for that in their system. We're actually building a project right now that's just about complete construction in Hawaii, where we will do that. We will literally bring up the Hawaii grid. But it's not something we would do here.
If there was a blackout, say, December 24th, like you were, you were mentioning, how would these systems operate?
This would shut down and go offline.
So I have a question. Number four, you're saying that's your interconnection?
Yes, our interconnection to Eversource.
Right. And then number three is Eversource, where your interconnection goes to Eversource, correct?
Yeah, it is basically, so if you, I know it's not on the plans, but just adjacent to that, there's two 115 KV transmission lines that go through that corridor down the southeastern Mass. And eventually down, I think, into the river.
Right, but what I'm getting at is, so you have your interconnection that goes into that interconnection, Fanstar, that goes to the transmission line.
Basically, that infrastructure, three, is them splitting their transmission line.
So we have pretty much three connections in there then?
Yeah, three steps to get to Eversource.
Okay. What does that require? Like tall aluminum?
There will be, everything in Eversource's area will probably be under, I think, 30 feet except for the, sort of step-up poles, as they call them, and dead-end structures that go to their existing transmission system. I believe Eversource has to actually separate the line that's coming down on the eastern side of the two lines that are there. They'll put in different structures there to sort of break that line. They'll turn the corner 90 degrees to come into that large area by the number three.
Yep.
And there'll be sort of two dead-end structure poles or a set of poles there that would then step down into their ring bus configuration and circuit breakers, and all that equipment is typically about 18 feet high, 20 feet high.
And that will go into four?
And that would go into, through a single connection into four, yes.
And what is four going to have, pole, two poles?
That would be all sort of at the same sort of height as what's in the substation in Carver today, outside of the, inside of the fence, probably 10 to 15 feet in that range, 18 feet. Nothing there, there's no poles there.
Okay. And then, because you reduce in some of these battery units, I'm not sure, is it all wired underground? Is that all going to be?
All of that wiring would be underground from?
All the way to number four?
Yep, everything would be underground through conduit and, you know, however the engineering firm ends up implementing it per the electrical code.
Right.
Yep, it would all be underground. There'd be nothing overhead until you went from the area where four is into the area where three is.
And then from three to Fanstar?
Yes.
When are you looking to begin full-blown construction?
I'd love to be doing that now. Right now, as Dan noted, we're expecting the EFSB ruling in June, and I think there's a 30-day period from that, and then we would be able to, basically our target would be to be prepared and start interacting with the building department prior to that. So we were sharing plans and details with them, sort of in that timeframe, and being ready to sort of go through the building permit process once we got approval from the EFSB.
So relating to the EFSB, why are you guys seeking comprehensive zoning exemptions?
Want me to take that one?
I, go right ahead.
Because we're always susceptible to zoning changes. Any 10 citizens of the town can put a town meeting warrant article on for zoning by law change. So that's why we ask for an exemption.
That's until the product, until your project is complete?
Until we have.
What you're saying, until you're fully permitted, right?
Yeah, well, we have building permit, yeah.
Well, you're permitted under the site permit plan currently, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So again, I mean?
Yeah, we're protected for now.
Right.
I mean, we're protected because we have a plan freeze. We have an A&R plan freeze.
Yes.
We are not protected, just, people don't, often don't understand this.
What do you mean by, hold on, excuse me, what do you mean by an A&R plan freeze?
Let him finish.
What A&R?
We've approved the project and he has three?
Free, three-year.
Three-year?
Freeze on changes in years.
Freeze. So when it was approved?
Okay, but that's not?
It falls under the bylaws of when it was approved.
I understand that.
Yep.
But A&R is approval not required, unless there's another acronym, A&R, that we're not throwing around?
No, it means, right, it does, A&R does mean approval not required, so maybe you meant under the site plan or?
Let me, let me beg.
Sure, please.
Okay. Special permits only provide you with a one-year protection on changes in zoning. Actually, it varies sometimes in county council. Usually it's one year, but it sometimes varies by community, but I'm going to assume it's one year because that's what the statute says. So for example, we have a special permit here. There were zoning changes enacted 14 months from now, and we hadn't started yet, we'd be subject to those zoning changes. Okay? Which is why last year we came in, I came before this board, and I submitted an approval-not-required plan, which this board endorsed. That gives us a three-year freeze on any changes in zoning. So that three-year freeze was effective about this time, a year ago, and it's good for two more years. But as we've talked about, these projects take a long time, and you are susceptible to changes every single year. So, you know, I do a lot of plan freezes.
Sure. Any further questions?
I don't know if it's the right time for it or wait until we have our discussion.
Okay. Are you guys doing questions? Don?
Most of the time.
All right, so this isn't a public hearing, but if somebody has technical questions that they want to raise, then maybe we have an address tonight. While we have the representatives here, you're welcome to raise your hand. All right, please. Well, I, this gentleman here?
Yeah, Frank DeAngelo, 19 Frank Street, I think. With the transformers and everything, you're going to be adding to this? What's the noise back there going to be?
So as part?
Decibels, you know?
Yep, so as part of the EFSB proceedings and the requirement of the state, Massachusetts Environmental Protection Administration, I believe, we are required to meet a specification that is no greater than, I don't have the document in front of me, but no greater than 10 dB from the existing background noise that exists today at the property lines. And so as part of our MEE profiling that went through with the state and was approved, we have to meet a limit that is no more than 10 from, I think there were like eight different points that we measured around the circumference of the property.
Well, my property evuts this.
Yep.
And I can hear the transformer humming at night all the time, this, they, and that, and you're adding to that.
No more than 10 and no more than what's required by the state is the existing background.
So I add that 10 dB noise is there now?
It has to be in the form of a question, please, Mr. DeAngelo. That's okay.
Right.
The gentleman in the back here?
Yeah, you mentioned, my name's Ben Pippen, I live in town. You mentioned that if the grid went down, the cooling system was shut down, the battery would be no longer operable. So how is that serving any advantage to us? If the grid did shut down, like you mentioned on December 24th, we ran close to it shutting down, what advantage is this giant battery doing for the town if it can't operate without the grid being functional?
Well, let me, just to start, this is, this isn't about, in the case of what this is in stability, it's not for the town, it's for the regional grid, so. But Chris, if you could?
Yeah, so ISO New England does not have market rules and allow sort of a system like this to come on in the instance of a blackout and provide local sort of connectivity. It's actually not even connected to the electrical infrastructure of the town, it's connected to Eversource's transmission system. In terms of benefits to the town, it is a project that's going to bring tax revenue to the town, that's not going to use water, that's not going to use sewage, that's not going to use services, but it's really part of the sort of infrastructure for the state and the region that we all need and use.
So to follow up on that, if we did lose power in the grid, what powers the cooling system for all the batteries?
So one of the sort of unique things of the, of the battery is that when you stop current flow from it or through it, it's not heating up anywhere. It's actually going to stop heating up, it will cool on its own. And the cooling system is protecting the batteries to a temperature that is multiple orders of magnitude away from any of those sort of runaway temperatures that we talked about earlier.
All right.
So it doesn't pose any safety risk to the equipment.
All right, James, my question.
All right, please.
Jonathan Frani, A4 Phosphate Bro, you mentioned cobalt was now into the batteries, wanted to chemicals. I didn't hear you mention that on your list. So can you explain, please explain cobalt and the dangers and the gas factor of that?
Yeah, and I apologize, when I was describing the different technologies for some of the board members, I was describing different technologies that are used that are all under the umbrella of lithium-ion batteries. One of those is NMC, nickel-magnes-cobalt, another is NCA, nickel-cobalt aluminum. Neither of those battery types are what are used in the product that we're installing. What we're installing is what's called LFP. It is a lithium-ion phosphate base. There is no cobalt or manganese in that chemical composition in the coatings on the anode cathode of the battery or in the cell itself.
I heard you say cobalt.
I most certainly did, I was describing the other technologies.
The older, the original technologies. Please.
Yeah, mine's going to be, Dan Frani, couple of questions. I look at this minus site modification, and it's a completely new design, I wouldn't call that a minor. My other question is, is the cables are going to run on the ground, which is our aquifer they're sitting on top of. And thirdly, what I've read is there is a two-year waiting period for the new Megapack 2 battery packs. How will they resolve that issue when they have to wait two years to get the battery pack to the top?
Well, I would expect that they'd come back and seek an extension on their site plan, unless, but that's, that's a business issue that, that we don't concern ourselves with, that's.
But this site plan that I'm looking at, it's a bunch of little round circles, and there's no detail in it at all, the projected changes. At least I'd like to see something come back with some actual design of the layout.
Well, there is a current design of the layout.
But it looks nothing like what they proposed today.
Well, this is a little less detailed than the original drawing, yes. The one on the left is the original drawing.
Right, the one on the right is?
Right.
I see circles and clouds, and I see no really designation of what's going in there. I've heard what's going in there, but I don't see it drawn out. And I have an electrical engineering background, and I don't see that on that layout, I'm sorry.
All right. Any further questions from the board?
I have one more. Like the gentleman was behind you spoke, when the grid goes down, how come the batteries can't keep the electricity flowing to keep those systems to keep cooling down? Why would they shut down?
So per ISO New England rules, I'm not allowed, the system's not allowed to provide power up to the grid. Therefore, it would shut itself down. When the, when you shut the battery system down, there's no current, there's no electricity flowing.
That's why I'm asking, it's a battery, you know?
Yep, a battery is not going to continue to heat up if there's no electricity flowing. So it would not need to continue to cool any further. It's going to be at, let's say the batteries were at 40 degrees C, which is well inside their operating temperature when the system shut down, they're going to stay at 40 degrees C and then cool environmentally once the system shuts down. There's no need to continue to circulate cooling fluid and keep that running when the batteries aren't going to continue to heat up. Batteries that aren't connected aren't going to heat up.
I, I think we've?
I'd argue the point, batteries are charged.
Please, there's a young lady behind you with a question that, and I will take the last question, please.
Thank you. My name is Catherine Harrelson, and I am a community-led water coalition, we are a volunteer-led organization of women. So my question is, I understand that there's no water being used on site at all, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. But there are hazardous chemicals being stored on site inside the batteries themselves. So as I understand it, the container of the battery forms the primary containment for the hazardous chemicals. The storage container forms the secondary containment for the hazardous materials. Is there tertiary containment for the hazardous materials to intercept them between the chemicals themselves and the groundwater? Because as I believe it, they're sitting on concrete pads, it's on gravel, but is there actual tertiary containment for the hazardous chemicals?
So I think there's a, I'm not sure exactly what hazardous chemicals storage you're referring to.
Just the acids inside the batteries themselves.
There is no acid, these are not lead-acid batteries, so when you shake these batteries, same thing as if you shook a Dorosel, there's nothing in there. It's not going to leach out or leak out like a lead-acid battery cell is. If you Google lithium-ion battery cell teardown on the internet, you'll see there is a solution that is part of the assembly process, but that solution actually, for lack of a better word, gels into the separated material and everything else. So there is not fluid that's going to be found in the batteries, different than the lead-acid battery that you're used to in your car, that literally when you shake it, sulfuric or hydrochloric acid in that cell. It's not the architecture here.
Okay, so there's no requirement for tertiary containment?
The only requirement is for tertiary around the transformers, and that's already being managed. And the transformers actually contain mineral oil.
Now, if everything goes according to plan, you're going to have boots on the ground roughly October, September?
Per the requirements that I need to meet for Eversource and that, I think we would probably look to try and mobilize somewhere after July. I think there's a 30-day period from when I get a ruling from the state. So we would try and prep ourselves to be sort of boots on the ground in that timeframe and sort of work around the winter months.
All right. Yes, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Maury, you're way in the back.
Very quick question, Sabremore, 12 South Main Street. You said that the newer, newer battery packs have a higher temperature where they, where they have danger, correct? What are the two temperatures between the original pack and the new?
So using the data from the previous UOL 9548 test for the Tesla Megapack 1 that had that previous chemistry, thermal runaway would typically occur per the test at around 135 degrees Celsius for the cell. And just for context, the operating temperatures these cells are kept at is well under, say, 50 degrees C. The LFP that's used in the Tesla Megapack 2 that we would be, are proposing to install is around 233 degrees C. I think that's 451 degrees Fahrenheit before they would go into thermal runaway.
Thank you.
All right. In regards to the minor modification, we're going to wait till we get a letter from the Fire Department, if that's acceptable.
Do I need to request that, or does that go through you guys?
I would do that.
Okay.
And other than that, the chair will accept a motion to?
You're going to ask for a motion to continue?
It's not a public hearing, so we'd be continuing the minor modification because we need more information.
So, sorry to interrupt, but I have a similar issue with everything that Mr. Frani was speaking about, in that for several times, we discussed the definition of a minor modification being an administrative issue and not a design change. And they were proceeding as a minor modification for a design change.
Are you requesting a more detailed?
Yes.
A more detailed site plan map, similar to the other one? Would that be?
Could certainly do that.
Okay, so?
Got other prints, I just thought this was clear to sort of show the changes we were talking.
Well, we deal with it all the time.
Understand.
But the general populace doesn't, so, I mean, and even, even I looking at that and can see that the secondary containers for the transformers, you know, it's not in the new one and things along.
Yep, no, we can certainly give you that.
Okay.
And that's not a problem.
All right. So we'll continue this, I don't think, when do you think?
Next week.
That, that's?
Yeah, March 28th.
But again?
Yep.
We're treating this as a minor modification, whereas previous hearings, we've discussed minor modification as being an administrative issue, and you've got a site plan, design change.
I'm going to have to ask? I'm gonna have to ask Ms. Quesal, in regards to that question. What is considered a minor modification?
So, a minor modification, you know, it is, it's an administrative change where the, I guess the application, the purpose of the application doesn't change. So for example, we had an issue with regard to the townhouses changing from single families to duplexes, where essentially the essence of the application changed. This is a tough one. It's, it's battery storage, it's still gonna stay battery storage. They are reducing, they're reducing the containment from, I think, 116 to 82 or something like that. So it is a reduction, and, but you know, they are moving things around. So I do think a letter from the fire department is a very good idea, because they are moving things around. But the essence of the whole application technically isn't changing. So, I'm not sure what a public, what public notice would, would do, because it's not, public notice is to, is to allow someone, so they know that there's a change in the actual, in the actual project, meaning it's gonna go from battery storage to something else, or there's gonna be a different interconnection with a, you know, in a different area, they're going to move the whole thing in a different location, something like that. But, you know, I mean, it's, it's up to this board.
But is that what they're doing, like they're putting an interconnection four and three?
But wasn't that their...
Originally?
I mean, there was still, there was still an interconnection with Eversource.
That hasn't changed yet.
Yeah, that hasn't changed.
They're gonna be, they're gonna have to relocate the equipment.
Yeah, they're relocating the equipment.
To, because of the, because of the entrance's chance.
So I brought up the zoning bylaw for minor modification. So, upon written request, the planning board can waive any supplemental requirements set forth in Section 3100 deemed by the planning board as a review of the application. In addition, the planning board may waive other requirements to Section 3100, including the requirement for a public hearing where the planning board determines if a project consists of a minor site plan. In order to constitute a minor site plan, the proposed work must be limited to construction and does not exceed a total gross floor area of 2,000 square feet. B, construction will not generate the need for more than 10 total number of parking spaces, and/or C, the modification to the site, which in the planning board's determination does not materially or adversely affect conditions governed by the Site Plan Review Standards set forth in Section 3160 below. So there's a threshold. Did it do this, did it do that, did it do that?
So you're really under C?
So what's 3160?
Those are the provisions of site plan, for our screening.
Okay. Performance standards?
Performance standards for site plan, screening, things like that.
All right, so, now the last change I, I didn't think was a minor modification, because it was an expansion. But this is a reduction on something that's already been approved, so I'm kinda, I'm kinda lost in this. But, how do you, in what sense do you feel? Because I'm not, I suppose we'd have a better idea with a more detailed site plan that they're gonna come back with in regards to this.
Well, if you're, if you're asking for why, for me to qualify my request, that's, I mean, we've got, we've got a chemistry change in the batteries, we've got a change in the number of enclosures. We don't know at this point now, because again, they're reducing the number of enclosures, changing the battery chemistry. We need a review of that as far as, because, I mean, we, there is a system going in in Southold, New York, that is almost one-third the size of this one, with twice as the number of containers. So that brings a big question into why we're twice as big with half as, we're putting out three, we're doing three times as much power and half the number of containers. Additionally, the, you know, we've got the, we've got the change to the entrance, so we're gonna have to replace all of the electrical equipment inside there to make sure that the fire department is able to, to gain entrance properly, as well as the...
In which area?
Right up here, number four.
Number four.
The entrance has been changed.
That's, that's no access for the fire department, correct?
So, what was changed was the fence originally, once you came into the original fence from the outside, it was set up where it would allow them to go Eversource or there. Eversource basically said no, and wanted this to be a sealed fence.
Oh, okay, all right, so that's, that's a non-issue, though. That's what I, that I would consider a minor modification. But yeah, it, it, my issues revolve around the, the size changes and the battery chemistry and enclosure changes, and with regards to the size of the project. Just wanna make sure that we're doing everything right.
I agree.
This is going right into the heart of one of the more densely populated areas of town. It's close to the school, close to a lot of things. It's definitely not a rural, isolated site.
Do you think you could provide information on the new battery packs?
Absolutely.
Do you think, like you could email it to us, so that, I know there's a lot of technical information in it.
I have it to you by Friday at the latest.
Might need a couple of days to go over.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, not a problem.
But you think you'd be ready by next week?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
100%.
Mr. Bott?
So, like I said, it's not a hearing, a motion's not required, but typically we do social people notes, so we'll be continuous till March 28th, 7 o'clock.
Excellent. Right here in Town Hall. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it.
I'm trying to get a nut freedom in our room, because we've been such good customers of this room, I think we're due for a new room of workers.
Excellent. All right. Yes, the chemistry changes is something we should look at, because I mean, it's like putting those telephone poles off, a big change from that. All right, our next order of business is a public hearing, and it's continued, on the application of Haley Shinas requesting a special permit pursuant to Sections 2230 and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw, located at 9 Island Farm Road in Carver, Mass. Assessors Map 10, Lot 1 through 6, 1-6, to operate a doggy daycare in the lower level of the home in a residential agricultural district. Thank you very much. I see we have updated photos.
Yes.
Oh, we have, there's more, it's in here somewhere?
So if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
So, I put together a draft decision on this, largely because I have talking points for the board. I did my best to incorporate into the decision the information provided in the initial application, as well as in the supplemental application after the site visit. So, if I may, without reading all the stuff at the top, as far as the findings of the board, the applicant submitted their materials, a two-page narrative of Haley's Happy Wags, a hand-drawn plot plan, an excerpt from a septic plan, photographs of the property, a scenario outlined in the backyard, two pictures of the backyard, photos of the interior of the bus blockery, and two showing the interior of the customized dog bus. I kept trying to find some way to say, like, sweet bus ride or something like that, but I just stuck with the custom dog bus. Additional photos were submitted following the March 8, March 9 site visit, that showed the improved gate to the fenced-in new yard, two additional crates that the board had asked about inside the facility, and additional attachments for the crates inside the bus. Amongst those findings are the sites located at 9 Indian Farm in Carver, on a 90,000, 34,000 square foot land, so residential agricultural. The business will operate in a 630 square foot basement, accessed through rear sliding doors, but the walkout basement includes a fenced-in backyard play area. The transport bus is parked on a gravel driveway on this, to the south of the house. Public hearing is open on February 28th into March 14th, to post public inclement weather, and then to March 21st, and likely closed tonight on March 21st. The planning board has a site visit, a site walk of the property on March 9th. Members Sordillo, Shea, Dionne, and Williams, along with myself, are there. The applicant's proposing operating hours of Monday through Friday, 8 to 4, and closed on national holidays, typically from the two-page narrative that Haley put together for us. Typically, the bus leaves the site at 8:00 AM to pick up dogs and returns inside about an hour later. The maximum number of dogs permitted in the facility is eight client dogs. Overnight boarding is limited to one dog, but overnight boarding is infrequent and may include Saturday. Per the Haley Wags, Happy Wags narrative, all dogs are required to have up-to-date rabies, distemper, parvo, and porutella vaccinations, and provide a recent work prior to starting the playgroup. The next door neighbors from 7 Island Farm and 8 Island Farm provide positive testimony support. Chairman of the planning board will likely designate the associate member to sit on the planning board due to the previous actions of Ms. Robinson. Conditions, true copy of this reported decision will be filed with registry of needs and shall be submitted to the board. The property owner will co-sign the application. The applicant shall comply with the Section 61A rules and regulations for the control of dogs contained in the Carver zoning bylaws, as mentioned. Condition four, operating hours are from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and closed on national holidays. Typically, the bus leaves the site at 8:00 AM to pick up dogs and returns inside about an hour later. Condition five, the maximum number of dogs permitted in this facility is eight client dogs. Condition number six, overnight boarding is limited to one dog, but overnight boarding is infrequent and may include Saturday. Seven, the applicant shall provide contact information to the animal control officer for any complaints about nuisance barking. The applicant has also agreed to provide contact information to their neighbor. Condition eight, dog will be picked up immediately in a biodegradable bag, sprayed with a veterinary-grade disinfectant, in place in a closed metal deodorized can. Will be deposited twice a week, disposed of twice a week. A 4,306 square foot fenced-in play area in the rear will also be, will be sanitized regularly. Nine, all dogs must be property-licensed in their home communities, and such information must be available to the animal control officer upon request. Ten, vaccination records for dogs shall be submitted to the operator prior to the dogs being accepted to the facility. Such records should be made available to the animal control officer upon request. Eleven, a special mix shall run with the applicant only, and should be voided if the applicant does not reside at the location of the business. I think I captured the essence of what we were talking about in the site visits and the information provided by Haley.
All right. Anything further to add?
I don't think so.
I think you've done a very good job.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
It is a public hearing. Do we have any questions or comments?
Phil Shannon, I just wanted to stand up to support Haley. She lives next to my brother, so I know her. Thank you for somebody who's great, though.
I think we met your brother at the last public hearing for Ms. Haley. Questions or comments from the board? All right, the chair...
I like the updates.
The chair will accept a motion to close the hearing on the application of Haley Shinas requesting a special permit to operate a doggy daycare in the lower level of the home at 9 Island Farm Road in Carver, Mass.
I'll make that motion.
I will second that.
Motion made by Mr. Dionne, seconded by Ms. Sordillo. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Dionne?
Mr. Dionne says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Ms. Sordillo?
Bow wow, aye.
And...
Mr. Donham says aye.
Okay, all right. Now, we open this for discussion. Typically, we discuss this and the terms and conditions, and then we come back at the next meeting with the signed copies of them. Do you have any?
I think she's done a good job out there, points looked really nice.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions in regards...
I love the idea of a young woman starting her own business is great, and you really are a role model for people your age.
Thank you.
Mom and dad did a great job.
I will tell you, available to the animal control officer upon request means they have to be kept on hand, okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Other than that, if we could change it to my given name, I'm quite all right with the...
Conelia?
Oh!
The decision.
I see.
Did everybody get a copy of the decision? I got extras here, so I didn't know if you guys...
I'll take one.
Just, just for clarification purposes, when you just, on the 8 to 4, you say you'll be departing at 8, expect to return by around 9. That means you'll be departing at 4, or will you be departing at 3?
I usually depart at like 3, 3:30.
Okay.
I think either way would be...
Yeah, yeah, either way, just, just for clarification purposes.
Yeah.
Other than that, I, I, I think the decision is, is fine with me.
I'm good, I have nothing.
I'm good.
Yeah. Mr. Williams?
So it says possible, we're not voting for this tonight, you gotta wait a week?
Well, we don't, we can, if everybody's fine with it, and there's no changes or discussion, further discussion aside from changing my name to it, then...
I was a bit too familiar with the chair on that proposal decision.
I'll move the revote tonight, then.
All right, the chair will accept that motion made by Mr. Williams.
I'll make that motion again.
Uh, seconded?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Dionne. All right, further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Dionne?
Mr. Dionne says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Al, Sordillo says aye.
Alham says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much.
There you go.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Signing all these now.
All right. Our next order of business is a public hearing continued on a citizen's petition, Article 1, to see if the town will vote to make the following changes to Section 2230, Use Regulation Schedule, Section C, industrial of the zoning bylaw. In the row, large-scale, ground-mounted, solar photovoltaic installations, replace SP with N under column RA. All right. Pardon?
Have this laid out?
I think we all do, but I'm, what is it? I'm looking, I dropped them earlier, so I'm not sure if I'm holding the right one.
Which one?
Is it say...
I have three of them.
Honorable Select Board?
Oh, you want to change, just P with R-A.
First one is, I have.
What's that?
Use regulation.
Is it?
Which section did I?
No, it looks like.
The updated.
Updated, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Here we go. I have an order. So, we have the first one?
This is, this is the first one that we're looking at here.
So, do we read this, or you guys want to read this up? So, basically, what we're doing is we're adding, taking the column for large-scale solar, and changing RA in GPD, GP, GBP, to N, changed lithium ion to battery storage and put those as N, and adding a battery storage facility standalone and made that N except for in the IA, IB, and IC, which are the industrial areas. This is a, hold on a minute. So, this is.
Go ahead, Dan.
Sorry. Improvements on what the town has proposed.
This is Dan Farini, by the way.
Yeah. These are, Dan Farini, these are improvements on what the town group has already proposed. These are in addition to, just cheer it up a little bit better.
All right. Now, you crossed out lithium ion, and you changed it to.
Battery storage.
But you're, oh, as.
I think they're, I think they're.
As a primary use.
These are all in industrial.
Battery, okay. So down here at the bottom, show me an equipment utilizing battery chemistry as a medium of energy storage. So, this is for connected battery storage to.
Yes.
Ground mount systems?
What was that again?
This is a connected battery storage to ground mount system is what you're going for?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And then standalone facility, for example, as a battery storage facility.
And that would be as a primary use? Might I ask why battery storage? I see that large-scale battery storage and battery storage facility.
I think the rationale behind that is because you can have a solar field with battery storage, and then we can also, as we witnessed earlier today, we can have a battery storage standalone.
As a primary use.
As a primary use.
Okay. But I notice in industrial A, which generally stands for what? Agriculture?
No, they're just letter A, B, and C because we have.
They're all industrial areas.
And it says no under IA?
Yes.
As a, all right. So this is just for primary usage?
Right.
And I expect that you're petitioning the planning board, not the select board?
Yes.
That's okay.
That's what confused me when you said a select board. But when you petition an article, you send it to the select board and impose it on the warrant.
Okay.
Only the select board can do something. I mean, Dan will tell me.
Absent.
Oh, it's a citizen's, because it's a citizen's.
It's a citizen's petition, so it has to go on.
Yep.
And can be changed.
All right. Could I get your considered response, considered thoughts on the matter?
Sure. So there's a couple issues with this, which is that they're looking for, this is a change to an article that hasn't been approved yet. So, so there's so many things that could happen. So on town meeting floor, article, it's either, I think it's 27 or 28 right now, I think the solar is 27. So Article 27, if that passes the way that it's written with no changes, then this article can be taken up, and it would make sense. If there's any changes to Article 27, well, first of all, if Article 27 does not pass, then I don't know what's going to happen to this article.
Then we probably withdraw it?
And that can only happen on town meeting floor because the article has to go on the warrant. And then the third option is if the article is amended somehow on town meeting floor, then we would, they would be scrambling as to what they're going to do with this article. So, and it's, it does say here that it is, it has been submitted by a person, by Mary Dormer or Dan Farini, which, which is better because at first I thought it was submitted by, by a group. So if there are changes on town meeting floor, I'm assuming that either one of those two individuals can make the decision as to what they want to change or not. So that's the procedural issue that I have. And then we have the, we have the overriding issue of limiting solar, which, you know, pursuant to the Tracer Lane case, solar cannot be so limited in areas that it essentially is prohibiting solar.
Yeah. Well, if I may, did, did you guys update this?
Yes.
Because I was under the impression that you, the last time we were together, that you had the, you had the no on the RA district, and that that was going to be revisited. With regards to the solar, I understand that you guys, and I'm speaking just to the solar.
Right.
Because when we look at the dual-use arrays and things like that, that's all going to be in RA districts.
Right.
You know, with regards to the cranberry growers with the dual-use and the floating arrays and whatnot.
Can I amend that right now, remove that N, and leave it as is? Yes, P, and not?
No, there can be no changes to this.
Okay. Only on the floor.
It's on, yeah.
Right, right.
It's gone on the warrant, it's going to go on the warrant like this, provided the signatures aren't verified by the town clerk.
And that's the protection to the applicant.
Yeah, yeah.
Because the reason they have petition articles is because this is what they want granted, they don't want somebody touching their stuff.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely, absolutely, yep.
So really, it's just, it's an up or down from you guys.
Yeah.
It's just a, it's not, we have, it's just a recommendation, yes.
Yes, that's what I think, the up or down. You're the recommender, you don't recommend.
As a prime, and the legality of it?
Most likely, the way that it, the way that it's written now, is my opinion that the Attorney General will not allow certain parts of it, will disapprove certain parts of it pursuant to the Tracer Lane case.
Right. Like large-scale, ground-mounted.
That's a big.
In the residential area.
Correct.
Okay.
Considering that 80% of the town is.
Yes.
Is all right, yeah.
So.
And the Attorney General's also very protective of battery, of battery storage also, in the same vein as solar, in my opinion.
Can I ask a question? If we go to the floor with this, could we change it as it, before it gets voted on the floor?
Yeah. You just, well, you'd have to do, you'd have to make an amendment, and the moderator would have to determine if it's within the scope.
Okay.
So that's not up to the planning board or town council, that's up to the moderator only.
And that would be done in writing to the moderator?
And as we talked about before, the planning board, whether they recommend favorable action or not favorable action, it still goes to town meeting.
Right.
Planning board's recommendation doesn't affect the ability for someone to discuss their article at town meeting.
This should be very sweet, then. If he's got it written, that's the way it goes, and you vote for it.
Well, no, so you're not, you're not considering amendments tonight?
No. If they've got it written, that we should move, this should be moving quickly because they can't change it, we can't change it.
Exactly. So that's what I'm saying.
That's it.
You either vote to recommend or you don't vote to recommend. Any amendments that are being discussed, you don't know if they're going to happen, or the moderator could call them out of scope.
Yep.
So you can only look at what's in front of you.
Yep. This is a public hearing, so would anybody like to speak? Please, Mr. D'Ambrosio.
Thanks to Mr. Chairman, Rob D'Ambrosio. I'm just, I'm not a resident of Carver, but I have clients that have various solar interests in Carver, and this board aware. I just, I think I wanted to echo what Attorney Questle said, that, you know, this is, I think, a long shot in terms of the AG. I mean, we saw that the AG wasn't even willing to entertain a temporary moratorium on solar. This is a permanent restriction on, you know, vast swathes, you know, 80% plus of the town. So, you know, my view would be, you know, it's obviously before it's going to make the decision, maybe tonight, but, you know, it's really, you know, given the technical challenges here, I think that recommending this to town meeting is just going to prompt a deluge, I think the attorney from Pierce Atwood for the last project, for the big battery project, mentioned, you know, there's going to be a deluge of freezing-type activity, zoning freeze-type activity, if something like this gets on the town meeting warrant article in its current form. It's going to be a lot of work for you guys, a lot of expense to the town, legal counsel. I just think it's, you know, this is not a realistic proposal, I don't believe. And, you know, again, I'm all for reasonable regulation, but, you know, this is squarely runs afoul of what the AG's been crystal clear about not allowing. You know, it's not, it's not reasonable in terms of scope, and it's not clearly designed to protect the public health, safety, or welfare. It would have to be clear compelling evidence that it achieves that goal. I don't see how you'd get there, to be honest. So that would be my two cents in terms of why I don't think it's advisable for the board to recommend this article at town meeting.
So would you say it's a waste of time?
I think it's a waste of everyone's resources, so yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
But it still goes before the town board.
Right. Yeah, it's already on the warrant, so.
So basically, all you're saying is you supported it, don't tonight, and then we'll change it, we'll have to change it.
I'm just kind of struggling with it because that prohibiting it in a residential zone is problematic.
Yeah. If I may, there's a 2022 Land Court decision that the AG cited when she struck the solar moratorium, it was Summit Solar Farm versus the brand-new Braintree Planning Board, and said the correct view of the limits of local regulation of solar energy facilities under Chapter 48, Section 3, is that local regulation may not extend to prohibition except under the most extraordinary circumstances. So there's a real strong bias against prohibition. That's not really regulation.
Well, we're not, I don't think that their intent is to prohibit it from the town. There's still large areas that they're, they're looking to allow it in, but again, the residential agricultural district is a, is a big problem.
It is. It's where it's mostly mounted in town, so we made an error on that.
Well, I think, I think also when there, there was a, wasn't there, with regards to the solar committee that the AG was talking about, we couldn't limit it to anything less than 25% or something like that of the town's area?
I don't remember the particular number, but in the questions that we had with town council in defending our moratorium, some of those questions that the AG asked was, well, what percentage of the town is, where solar is permitted? And one of those cases that was, that they, that town council brought back was, at the beginning of that discussion was, in a one particular case, in front of a town where there was, they were allowed essentially industrial districts, and the AG thought that was, that limiting to those smaller areas was in fact a prohibition or an unreasonable regulation, and denied that zone change.
Questions or comments from the board?
I just think you can't stop progress. You know, it's our future, no matter how we want to look at it, and there's really not a lot we can do. That's how everything started, electricity and everything else that we have around us. It's, it's the future, whether we like it or not.
Well, I don't think that that's any reason, if we don't like it, we should, you should fight it, because.
It's a losing battle.
I mean, when you come in, when you, when you come into these, when you start to, when you start to look at this stuff and you start to think about solar.
We should still be using whale oil.
And everything else, it's a huge waste. The, the resources required to make the panels and everything else like that is just, we don't recover. You don't, you don't recover enough to make solar worth it, not to mention our electric bills are still going up.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, we should fight it. Fight for a better alternative than the solar. Solar's fine on somebody's house. These big projects, I think that we should be looking at other avenues.
Because right now, the town has over 20 large solar rooms.
I know.
Yeah. And more coming, so we're just trying to.
No, I understand what you're trying to do, and I respect it, but I think you can't stop progress, and the Attorney General's not going to let us. So it's a waste of time.
If, if this goes through anyway, we'll make a motion to change it from the residential two groups.
Which I'm sure we all appreciate, but it's, the issue is that we have to deal with what's right in front of us. So any, any further questions or comments from the board? Public comments? Seeing none. Chair will accept a motion to close the public hearing on citizen's petition, Article 1, to see if the town will make the following changes to Section 2230, Use Regulation Schedule, Section C, industrial of the zoning bylaw, in the row, large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations, replace SP, special permit with N, no, under column RA, residential agricultural.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Gatski.
Second.
A second by Ms. Sordillo. Discussion among the board. Mr. Dionne?
Bon, I got to take a walk to us.
We'll take our time.
Mr. Dionne says aye.
John Gatski says aye.
Ms. Sordillo?
Ms. Sordillo says aye.
Mr. Williams?
I'm not voting on these.
I believe Mr. Williams is part of this.
Well, that's a special permit.
Oh.
He's our, he's our.
Public hearing.
He's our guy, he's our council, he's our.
Yes.
But he doesn't get to vote.
And Mr. Shay says aye. All right. All right. The board will accept a motion to recommend citizen's petition, Article 1, to see if the town will vote to make the following changes to Section 2230, Use Regulations Schedule, Section C of the zoning bylaw, in the row, large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations, replace SP with N under column RA. We just closed the public hearing.
Oh, oh.
Now we're going to, now we're going to vote on it.
All right, yeah. So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Gatski.
Oh, so these are all amendments?
Those are the things they want to change at town meeting.
Do I have a second? The chair will make a second on this motion. All right. So the motion is to approve it, to recommend it to town, town meeting, a yes vote is to recommend, a no vote is to not recommend. Mr. Dionne?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye, as long as we can, as long as we take care of those amendments.
No, you can't.
No. It can't be, right.
I apologize.
I hope, yes. I know what you mean.
Yes.
So your vote is?
I'll back it. Why not?
Aye.
Aye, yep.
Ms. Sordillo?
Nay.
And I have to go with nay because of that issue.
I agree. So it was two to?
Two to. Next order of business is, yes, please.
So our vote was, at first, I'm not quite sure I got the motion right. So motion?
The motion to approve Petition Article 1, Citizens Petition Article 1, if the town will vote to make the following changes to Section 2230.
Motion to recommend.
Motion to recommend.
Motion to recommend favorable action.
Two to.
Kevin, stay.
I don't understand why I'm not being allowed to vote.
You can, because the only reason you couldn't vote on something, if you missed meetings, it was a special permit or subdivision.
Okay, well, it wasn't I thought it was a public hearing.
Yeah, in my, in my last council, since you're here, so Kevin wasn't here for the initial hearing for this. He's here for this one.
Was the initial hearing, was this discussed at the initial hearing?
Yes, it was.
And it just, you guys didn't vote?
Correct.
Okay.
We continued the public hearing till tonight. And it wasn't taped or recorded.
Well, you guys don't have them on.
No.
Hopefully you'll have it soon. So you really are not, you're not acting as a quasi-judicial board right now because you're not issuing a permit. You're not, you know, issuing, this is just a recommendation. So I think he could, I think he could vote. And I think that's how we did it last time, too.
Yeah, I think so.
Right, but I had a lot of problems because if you're not there for the testimony and part of the hearing
Agreed.
in regards to a public hearing, you don't have all the evidence because there's no record of the last meeting aside from the minutes, which hasn't been approved. There's no way to catch up on it.
Correct, but again, in my opinion, right now, you're not acting as a quasi-judicial board because you are not issuing a permit or a right to someone, you know. And so that is why, that's what Chapter 39, Section 23D pertains to, is a board that issues, you know, some kind of permit. You can do the Mullen Rule. I guess the flip side of that would be that if you don't attend a public hearing, you can't use Mullen to get out of it for something like this. Even if you, even if the town had accepted the Mullen Rule, you can't use it for something like this. I think the reason why is because you don't need it.
Okay, all right. So
So the statute doesn't affirmatively state that you can vote. What it says is you cannot vote on these things. So this one is silent. This one's silent.
This one's not listed in the votes.
It's not, it's not a quasi-judicial act.
All right. So who decides?
You run the meeting. You're the chairman. It's your meeting.
And if I feel that because all the evidence wasn't available?
Yeah, if you feel that evidence, if you feel that significant evidence was produced at the last meeting, then that's up to you.
All right, so it's, all right, so there was a lot of evidence, but it wasn't specific to this. So in regards to that, do we revote? We take the vote? We make the motion?
You haven't declared the vote yet.
Okay, so
You have not declared the vote at this point because Mr. Bott, he sought clarity. So you haven't declared the vote. And the motion, right now, at two to two, the motion has failed. So it is, you are not recommending this to town meeting right now.
Okay.
Because the motion failed.
Yep.
So if Mr. Robinson's vote is no, it's superfluous. If his vote is yes, then you have something to worry about.
Okay. But this is specific, this was specific to tonight, so I will allow Mr. Robinson to vote. So the question is, do you vote to recommend this to town meeting? This petition, Citizens Petition Article 1, to see if
I'll scream.
Okay.
Yeah, he was here for the motions.
I just wanted to clarify, just, so.
Mr. Robinson says no.
Mr. Robinson says no. All right. Now we're done with the public hearing and the vote.
Petition one, correct.
Our next order of business is Citizens Petition Article 2. To see if, it's a continued public hearing on Citizens Petition Article 2, to see if the town will vote to amend zoning bylaw 3580.32, land clearing, soil erosion, and habitat impacts to add the following section, 3580.32 of the bylaw. A large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation that actively occupies more than five acres in any residential agricultural district is prohibited.
We added the statement
Please identify yourself.
Sorry. Dan Frinney, 84 Placid Grove. We added the statement to this, that this, this basically bylaw is being proposed. So if five acres, so it's basically if there has been, it's written as, if there has been a sand removal or a sand gravel operation down on this property, then it cannot be used for five years for solar. If it's been used for forestry, fire, or any other type of land use, it can be used for solar arrays. But if it's specifically being dealt with trying to stop the sand mining operations that are going in town, so if somebody comes in and decides to come in and wipe out all the sand and then decides later on, now I've got a nice flat spot, I can put solar array. They can't because I've used the resources of the land already, but sand removal.
May I offer a point of clarification very briefly, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I just think it's important to note, Mr. Frinney, it might have been inadvertent, it probably was, but I didn't hear him mention the first sentence of the amendment, which is not pertaining to, you know, restricted timeframe after disturbance, but it's simply a blanket restriction for any large-scale ground-mounted solar installation to occupy more than five acres in a residential agricultural district period. So I think that's, in a lot of ways, more significant. I just want to make sure everyone's aware of that. And I think it has similar problems to the last item myself.
Right, kind of more or less misworded.
Right, because it's
Because he's just saying you're limited to five
He's taking out the whole, he's taking out 80% of the town and saying you can't have large-scale solar, which again, I think is going to be issued for the AG's office, and I think it's, you know, I don't think it's going to fly.
This is also based on the, in a way, on the proposal the town has put in because they're not allowing any more than, any larger than five-acre solar arrays being put into town. It's my understanding. I didn't
No, we're limiting forest clearing?
To five acres.
Five acres.
Yeah. They can't just go in there and wipe out the forest and put solar in. And what you're saying here is basically, you know, you can't do large ground mountain that occupies more than five acres.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, perhaps I can speed things up. A almost identical article was disapproved by the Attorney General in Wareham. In fact, Wareham's was actually a little bit, a little bit more broad. No, less, it was more permissive, I think, because it was 10 acres. But it was the, also the, had to be previously cleared. And so the Attorney General actually disproved that article because it was a prohibition, it was an unreasonable regulation of solar use. So I don't think that the five acres will work.
The five acres or, and the other one, the issue, would be how do you tell somebody that they can't do anything to their property for five years? This is a public hearing. So I would strongly recommend taking council's advice on this because we're just making a recommendation to town meeting at this point.
It's not my proposal, so I can't
No, and you can't amend it here. We have to go with what's going on here. And I understand, again, I understand the purpose and the carbon sequestration and importance of cheese and greenery.
But Didn't we amend an article last year in the meeting?
No, it says
No, it says it's petition.
I believe that one of the moratoriums, because it
Oh, that was, that was
It was basically the same thing as one from the select from the
We had the, we had the Citizens petitioner agree to changes to the town's moratorium.
Right, yes.
We involved the Citizens petitioner to give us
Amend.
on changing the select board's moratorium.
Okay, all right. That explains it. Wasn't sure which one had gotten changed.
Further questions or comments from the board? Members of the public? All right. The chairman will accept a motion to close the public hearing on Citizens Petition Article 2 to see if the town will vote to amend zoning bylaw 3580.32, land clearing, soil erosion, and habitat impacts to add the following section, 3580.32 of the bylaw. A large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation that actively occupies more than five acres in any residential agricultural district is prohibited.
How much said motion?
Motion made by Mr. Dion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Gatsky. Further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Dion.
Mr. Dion says nay.
Wait, no, we're closing the public hearing.
Oh, Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
It's a long day.
Mr. Robinson? Mr. Robinson says aye.
Ms. Sordillo?
I'm a little confused.
Oh, we're closing the public hearing.
Close the public hearing, yes.
Aye. And Chairman Shea says aye. The chair will accept a motion to favorably recommend Citizens Petition Article 2 to town meeting to see if the town will vote to amend zoning bylaw 3580.32, land clearing, soil erosion, and habitat impacts. An LSGMSPI that actively occupies more than five acres in any residential agricultural district is prohibited. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Gatsky.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Dion. Discussion amongst the board. Seeing none.
Mr. Dion says nay.
John Gasky says nay.
Mr. Robinson.
Mr. Robinson says nay.
Ellen Sordillo says nay.
And Mr. Shea says nay. All right. Our next order of business is a public hearing on Citizens Petition Article 4 to see if the town will vote to amend zoning bylaw 3580.70, dimension and density requirements setbacks by striking from Section 3580.70 subsections 2A, 2B, and 2C. Which one am I looking at here?
Zoning bylaw is just striking two weeks, maybe, zoning bylaw.
Yeah, I'll show you what it is. This is the one that I have.
What's the first page?
No, this is actually
Oh, yours is all.
This is what I was getting tonight.
Now, you're withdrawing your request on Petition Article 3.
All right. Three, three, sorry, we've voted on.
We voted on Article 1 and Article 2.
Right.
Citizens Petition Article 1 and Citizens Petition Article 2.
Tonight.
Tonight?
Yeah.
Now, you're requesting Citizens Petition Article Number 3 to be withdrawn.
That's not, that's not, we're doing four.
We're on four, right.
We've already voted on three.
All right, then, let me give that back.
No, no, we haven't voted on three. We're
Well, that was That was last week.
Oh, did we vote on it?
Oh, the last meeting. I thought that's what we voted on.
I'm not sure if we did it, voted on it.
We did three.
Yeah.
We did a withdrawal, yes.
Okay.
That was the moratorium.
Yeah, because that one's going to be withdrawn on the floor.
All right.
It's going to be withdrawn on the floor, yes.
And so
On four.
All right.
On Article
So basically, this article is going to
This one, right?
Yes. The setbacks were changed, and so what we want to do is bring the setback back to 200 for residential and agriculture. But if it's in a budding agriculture, it stays at 12, 12 and 1/2 feet. So if you, everything but, so if it's a budding of bog or other agriculture, it stays at 12 and 1/2 feet. Anything else, it would go back to the original 200 feet. Except that.
And on the back page, is that the current Carver zoning bylaw, which we are supposed to be amending?
Is it the current bylaw?
So the current bylaw is being amended and we're trying to go back to
Because we are amending 25 feet to be 50 feet.
Yeah.
If I may, this is the existing zoning and the petition is to delete really the whole section.
Oh, the subsection underneath it.
A, B, and C, which is everything.
Right, A, B, and C.
It would eliminate all these screening provisions related to pool use.
Right, right.
I don't understand from the petitioner's standpoint, that's reducing the screening requirement. It's my interpretation, but
But you're looking to get rid of A, B, and C.
Change 2A to the setback to Change 2A to the setback to 200 feet, and then 2B would be --
So this was, but this, this was, this is updated from the last meeting.
Yes.
Wait, so --
It can't be, it can't be. It has to be only what was submitted to town clerk and with a signature on it.
Then I will withdraw this one.
Okay, because --
But are you sure you want to withdraw it and not amend it on the floor?
Well, you don't withdraw anything here.
No, no.
Let's, it's not mine, so I can't, I'm just, so this is the planning board's recommendation?
Right.
The planning board wants the recommendation.
Right, this is just a recommendation based on the wording.
Okay, it's, I'm sorry.
All right, so.
Based on the wording.
And based on --
You can't even look at that because the wording is --
A, B, and C.
That.
Deleting it, they're deleting A, B, and C.
Yeah.
So this is Petition Article Four.
No, I understand. I thought our last meeting that was, it was going to be 12 and a half feet between bogs.
That's --
There's going to be a setback of 200 feet residential unless they had written permission and they could bring it down to 50.
That's the solar.
That's the, that's the, from the --
Article 27.
Okay, this is for --
And we did, this was addressed as part of the solar bylaw because 25 feet becomes 50 feet. That's, that's being changed in the solar bylaw, Article 27.
And the article that's put before us seeks to eliminate that, this whole section.
Yeah, A, B, and C.
And then the C for --
All right.
So the way, if they eliminate all of this and it passes at town meeting, he wants to add a whole new thing, is that going to?
I think that, I think his intention --
The moderator is going to say, you just deleted it all, now you can't --
No, I, I, I don't, I think it looks like you want to keep A and B.
Right.
That's not what it says.
No, I, no, I understand. Right, we're not amending, right.
You're trying to figure out what they want, if that's not, look at, look at what's in the law.
Well, we're looking at what's been, we're looking at what's presented and, right.
Right, so if that passes at town meeting --
That's what we're voting on.
This is what was presented to us.
No, because you can't, you have to amend the article before it passes or fails.
At town meeting.
So at town meeting, if it passes, if it passes, you can't then amend it, you have to go back to the next town meeting.
We have to do it before.
So on the floor of town meeting is their opportunity to amend the articles. We can only vote on what was presented to us.
These are the last ones at town meeting?
And this is to amend zoning bylaw 3580.70 by striking sections 2A, 2B, and 2C. Any further public comment? Questions or concerns from the board? I'm doing all of these in a positive motion, so the chair will accept a motion to positively recommend.
Close.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Positive? It's not just me.
The chair will accept a motion to positively close the public hearing for Citizens Petition Article Four to amend zoning bylaw 3580.70.
I'll positively make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right. Motion made by Mr. Gatski, seconded by Mr. Dion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Dion, closing the public hearing.
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gatski says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. All right. The chair will accept a motion to positively recommend Citizens Petition Article Four to see if the town will vote to amend zoning bylaw 3580.70, dimension and density requirements setbacks by striking from section 3580.70, subsections 2A, 2B, and 2C.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Gatski.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Dion. All right. Discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, Mr. Dion.
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gatski says nay.
You understand the motion. A yes vote would recommend it to town meeting, a no vote would not recommend it to town meeting.
As it's worded.
Yeah, as it's worded.
Oh, I misunderstood that.
Would you care to reconsider your vote?
I would like to reconsider my vote, please.
Please.
Mr. Dion says nay.
You're only voting, I'm getting my --
I know, but John got me, I mean, Rich got me confused.
So Kevin Robinson says nay.
Ellen Sedillo says nay.
And Mr. Shea says nay. No, it threw me, threw me off too. All right, thank you very much.
I'll give you some coffee, but I already drank it.
Thank you. Planning director notes?
I will be brief. Can you hold it back at the police because these chairs don't like that.
I like that, I vote yay.
So schedule wise, our regular schedule, we have a meeting on the 28th, and our next scheduled meeting date is April 11th, which is going to town meet. So in the event that we have something that comes in that needs some immediate action, the board may need to take a, have a meeting in the interim. Could that be the week before, be it the 7th, the 4th, I think? Let me get my calendar here. Or the week after, which is during the break. So if we don't have a meeting on the 11th, it's the board's preference to meet on the 4th if necessary, or on April 18th. That's conceivable, we won't have to meet on either one depending upon what's coming across this record.
Will that come within the --
We can talk about it on the 28th, we can talk about it on the 28th, but I just want to put that ahead, okay?
I just want to make sure that we're not going to go over any required time if we push it to the week after.
And if we do, well, nothing's advertised at this point, we've got four ANRs that showed up today, and they're going to be on the agenda for the 28th. So I don't really think we're going to have something that comes up.
Okay.
But --
Then I would recommend afterwards because four weeks of meetings in a row is kind of hard on everybody.
We'll see, but there's your button here.
How does the board feel? I see the 18th, I believe you said?
Right.
Next meeting, the 18th?
No, no, our next meeting is March 28th.
Yes.
March 28th.
But we can either have a meeting on the 4th or the 18th.
If necessary.
Mr. Shea, may I have your excuse?
Please, and I just --
Unless you need my calendar.
No.
It is, it is the spring break for schoolchildren, the 18th, which is why we're --
Thank you, your input is invaluable to this board.
Have a good night.
Thoughts on --
I understand.
If we have it on the 4th, we're going to have three meetings in a row in town meeting, so.
No, no, to the 18th. Too much.
John?
I'm on vacation, but I don't think I'm going anywhere, so the 18th, I think I can get behind.
If necessary, I'm sure we can --
I don't have Tuesdays, I keep my Tuesdays open for --
Video conferencing if necessary.
For types of meetings and stuff like that.
State still allows that.
The deadline's like coming up, expiring like really soon. It might be the end of April, until it's like, but like I said, we'll, we'll discuss again on the 28th terms and dates.
Yes.
Just want to put that up here. And before we leave, this is the reformatting of, from Mr. Shea's third, I, I, I.
Excellent. Oh, you've finished that already?
Yeah, well, we had a couple minutes.
That's why he disappeared.
Yeah, I wanted to get it off the printer.
Done with that, done with that.
That's, your question.
Oh, there is one, I, yeah, you make copy, though.
So we will see you guys in a week.
Are we closing the meeting?
We've got minutes to do, right?
I was going to say, are we doing the minutes or are we waiting for next week?
You got minutes?
Two weeks.
All right, our next order of business is, any discussion? Or do we just have it?
I don't know. For anybody that's still paying attention, flag football signups continue until the combine this weekend, so get your kids out there, sign up, flag football, yay.
Rich, you got the meetings for 214 on you?
I do.
On page three, there was --
John Williams, never told I see that signature on.
Mine's inside on the rubber check.
All right. I, have a coffee with him? I just think that on page three on the bottom, in regards to recommendation of select board on exercising their right of first refusal, I'm not sure Mr. Farini asked the board to go forward with this project. Maybe I --
Oh, keep in mind, there's no expiration date on approving minutes at this point either.
Well, we'd have to ask him or --
Yeah, that doesn't sound like him, huh?
It doesn't, yeah, because it just didn't --
Asked the board to go forward with the project because of sole source?
I think he likely asked the board to recommend exercising their right of first refusal, if I was to put words into his mouth.
Then, right, that, I would just assume clarify that on this one, but --
Was it 124 or 214?
214.
214.
Because I think if we take it out of context, it --
Right.
All right. The board will accept a motion to approve the minutes of January 24th, 2023.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Dion. Any further discussion? Ooh, was Ellen absent at that one?
124.
Yep.
Yep.
So we're going to have to --
Ellen Gatski. Okay, so.
Oh, you can still make the motion, but you'll have to abstain from the vote.
Okay.
I believe that's appropriate.
Okay.
All right, all right. Mr. Dion.
Mr. Dion says aye.
I was absent.
He was absent.
So you abstain?
I abstain.
All right.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ms. Sardillo?
Oh, I can, okay, I abstain.
No, no, you have to abstain.
Oh, I abstain.
And Mr. Shea says aye.
Right. Fabulous.
The board will accept a motion to approve the minutes of February 14th, 2023, after clarifying Mr. Farini's statement.
I'll make that statement.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Sardillo. Further discussion?
Was I here for that?
No. I'm staying.
Seeing none, Mr. Dion?
So we're voting on Paul McCarter right now?
February 14th.
Yes.
And that statement is Dan Farini, a resident of Carver, asking the board to go forward with the right of first refusal because of the sole source.
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gatski says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Abstain.
And Mr. Shea says aye. The minutes of 314 was our canceled meeting, and that was done by Mr. Bott in --
That was a cameo appearance.
It was.
So short on TV.
Solo, no, he soloed. So the chair will accept a motion to approve the minutes of March 14th, 2023.
I don't think I was here for that.
Nobody was.
Okay, well, I definitely wasn't here for that.
We canceled because of the storm.
Okay.
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gatski says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. The chair will accept a motion for adjournment.
Oh, I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo, seconded by Mr. Robinson. Further discussion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
Aye.
Mr. Gatski says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much and have a good and safe evening.